...United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ballboard is roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Ern.
Counselperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Algen.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda, any additions?
Nothing additional from that Monday update.
Looking for motion to approve, who wants to get something up here?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Jury, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of minutes of special meeting of June fourth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us to finance and budget, we got the accounts payable listing there with the additional listing. Any questions? Direct them to Minister DeShimmel. Any questions for discussion or any?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That was in the motions and general business, and first item of the night will be two thousand eighteen audit reports, Nishay Pranesh.
Thanks for having me tonight, my name is Peter Ladeek, with the Spish Shaffer Associates, and we perform the audit for the city of Sturtonville for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. We are not going to actually go through the audited big book that I handed out tonight, I did go through with that about a week ago so with the finance committee on June fifth, and I went through it line by line, I spent a little bit of time going through the actual audit and book, so tonight, all the numbers from the PowerPoint that we will go through come directly out of that book, so any question about any numbers, we'll be able to tie them back into that financial statement. Summary there, the first was the intro page, so our opinion is a clean, unmodified opinion, but individually everything in the financial statement is fairly stated, it is reasonable, not absolute assurance, as we take a risk-based approach and make our selections based off the perceived risk, so we actually trace documentation from the invoice back to all the supporting documentation to the check, followed all the way through. All of our selections that we made this year had adequate supporting documentation with it, so that makes it very easy for us. The city keeps very well records from the city documents, so it makes our process a little bit easier. Also within the financial statement, we have to provide a report on the Minnesota legal compliance, we didn't have any exceptions there. Minnesota legal compliance requires us to test, make sure the city is adequate collateral for their public investments to their public funds, make sure they follow all the contracting and bid laws, and in kind of for the business, we didn't have any exceptions noted. As I mentioned, we did sit down with the audit committee or finance committee on June fifth, and went through the financial statements. Then we went through the CAFR report of the book, we went over the two letters that we issued with regards to the internal controls related to segregation of duties, it's the same fighting we've had in the past. It's just the office here is small, so there's not properly, there's no way to properly segregate all the accounting functions, so it's just important for the council role, is you get to review those disbursements and like AP listing to make sure if you have questions, bring those to attention. And then there's the auditor's responsibility letter, which is the other letter that we handed out, and that just says there is some estimates that we use, such as depreciation, there's net pension liabilities, and accrued utility usage that are estimates that are in the financial statement. We didn't have any disagreements with management, all of our questions were answered, and we didn't have any corrections for the city. And then we went over, we had three responses, the city submits for the GFOA certificate, which is an extra step the city doesn't have to do, but they received an award the last eleven years, so we are planning on submitting the document once again for twenty eighteen, so we have responded to those findings. There's no single law required, so that's the federal funds, of course, seven hundred and fifty thousand were spent, they have not reached that threshold. And then they said the city was awarded the GFOA certificate for twenty seventeen, and we're applying again in twenty eighteen. So if we move on to the governmental funds, just a brief, funds that the city has, the general fund is the main operation of the city, and the city has a couple of special revenue funds up there, the library revolving loan, the retail revolving loan, civic center, volunteer fire purchase, foundation, projects or sales tax, which was, all the activity was closed out in twenty eighteen, so that fund will not be with the city any further in that economic development. Then there's three debt service funds, and then two types of capital projects. So if we can actually go on to tax capacity, so you can see how the city has grown in each of the past five years, I'm just going to point out back in twenty twelve, the way that tax capacity was calculated at the state, they changed their formula, they used to have a market value of home set exclusion, so the city's tax capacity not actually decreased their value, so it's just the change in the way that calculation. But it's growing quite a bit, it's just over a quarter to four hundred million right now, so in the last seven years, you've had about seven hundred and fifty thousand in tax capacity, so the city is growing quite rapidly. Next, if we go on to the property taxes, so property taxes collected increased by three hundred and seven thousand in collections this year, so that represents about fifty-five percent of the total governmental collections for the city. When I say governmental, that's excluding your water, and so your stormwater fees. We increased the levy, so levy was a little three million, three million and fifty-eight thousand, so we collected over that as we collected sales in the only one for twenty eighteen. Next is the tax increment revenue, so currently one TIF collections, there's one TIF district revenue the city is sort of helping on, so we collected about thirty-six thousand in twenty eighteen, a little bit from prior year. Next is the government aid, LGA, so after remaining out typically flat the last four years, the city did see about a fifty thousand dollar increase in twenty eighteen, so that represents about seventeen percent of the total governmental revenues received in twenty eighteen, they received just under nine hundred and fifty thousand in twenty eighteen, and it's going up a little bit to about nine hundred and fifty-two thousand in the next year. If there is questions that come up, please feel free to stop, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. The governmental fund revenue, so just looking at the numbers we looked at, just looking at different ways you can see the far left, or the tall purple column there is the property taxes, we've had to increase the, with the increasing just cost of the city in doing, everything's costing more, you've had to increase the property taxes, the state's not kicking in much more money, it did increase it a little bit in twenty eighteen, but this remained relatively flat, so that gap is widening, however wide you guys are on property taxes to fund the city operations. If we go on to the governmental, so next expenditures, the general government, so this brings the benefits, professional services, supplies, telephone, insurance, so just more of that administration cost, equals about seventeen percent of the total expenditures in twenty eighteen, that's excluding the debt service and capital in the big projects, so it was relatively flat, down about a thousand from twenty eighteen. The decrease from twenty sixteen, that we, in twenty sixteen was due to the way that salaries were being allocated, and the city received a large insurance dividend, which offsets a little of those costs for insurance. Public safety and transport, so this is law enforcement, fire protection, street lighting, and transit. Transit in the prior years, before twenty fourteen includes transit, that program for that function is no longer continued with the city. The total expenses were just under nine hundred thousand at eight hundred ninety-six thousand, it's the most significant area where your dollars are spent, about twenty-seven percent of your total governmental expenditures occur in this area. So the actual operating expenses were up over nineteen, which is in the darker green, and then the capital outlay, there was not much of capital outlaying this year, there was a gear drive for the fire department in the prior years, in fact, twenty fifteen, there was the chassis, twenty sixteen was the tanker, and then the generator, and tanker upgrades in twenty seventeen. So the capital outlay is what the decrease that are on public safety and transportation expenditures. So just a little breakdown on the public safety, so the law enforcement contract is about five hundred and sixty thousand, so up sixteen thousand in the prior year. Fire protection, first responders is at about two hundred and sixty-six thousand, that decrease is just for no major capital, as there had that in the prior three years, and then the street lighting is up a little bit at about seventy thousand. The total of fire protection costs of core funded through property tax collection, about one hundred and twenty-five thousand, tax contracts of one hundred and twelve thousand, and then the state fire aid, which is passed through to the fire relief, is about sixty thousand. So total selections were about two hundred and ninety-six thousand, so those actually did cover the operations in twenty eighteen just with the decrease or the no major capital outlay. Public works expenditures, so that is up above sixty-six thousand, so the total is about five hundred and eleven thousand, that's fifteen percent of the current general expenditures, the main increase in there was we did some seal coating for about sixty-two thousand, and then some repairs for the Mack truck, that expensive. The library expenditures, been relatively flat the last four years, there hasn't been a whole lot of change. Total expenditures totaled three hundred and eighteen thousand, a slight increase of about a thousand, so it's just under ten percent of the total governmental expenditures. Operating expenses were up about seven thousand, so not much of an increase there now, it's mostly just to the health insurance. We go on to the recreation expenditures, so this is civic center, swimming pools, summer programs, adult softball, grounds, and park. Total expenditures are just under six hundred and forty-five thousand, an increase of just under twenty-two thousand in twenty seventeen. The main increase was in the operating expenditures, and that was the moving of the ball, ball fans, the barricade, and then there's some expenses that they did in my after trees that were in the current year. So park and rec, we also did a comparison, they have some direct revenues coming in, the direct revenues are in the blue, the operating expenditures in the red, and then the presenting capital outlay in the green. So the parks brings in about just under twenty-seven, or just over twenty-seven thousand revenues, and their expenses were about three hundred and twenty-six thousand. The pool, pretty close to covering their operating expenditures, they're very odd in about one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, expenses were one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, so about eleven thousand, short of covering it without including capital, so it's close to the pool, that one break in use, so they're doing a good job of getting people into the pool. And then we have, go on to the economic development, the main increase here, so that's up to three hundred and eighty-three thousand. Main expenditures there, we did three new revolving loans in twenty eighteen, there's the seat of professional fees in there, some tax abatements, and then there's the TIF payment, which was paid back to the developer for the cost that he put into that TIF district. So just looking at governmental funds expenditures, you have the total increase there, or the total of the public safety, second to the rate, each of those groupings has been the highest in all the years, so you guys spend a lot of time, as I said, in that public safety, and then you guys also have put in, this is the last couple of years, on your parks, and so that has crept up as well. But all the other categories have remained relatively flat. So if we go to the general fund budget to actual, so this is the general government, the budget expenditures are in the blue, the actual expenditures are in the red, so the general government category is under budget, about twenty thousand, public safety was pretty much at that level, but they're about four thousand over, and also that they spent some more salaries in the solid waste, department cleaning that up, or the solid disposal area. Public works was about seventy thousand under budget, most of that was due to the salaries and employee transition, then the recreation was about forty-one thousand under, and that was primarily due to salaries as well. So the total for the general fund is under budget by about one hundred and twenty-nine thousand in twenty eighteen. So you have five other funds that have budget to actual schedules, but again, the budgets in the first column are blue, and then the actual expenditures in the orange. So the revolving loan fund, the first one was over budget by about eighty-two thousand, but that was just the city did three new loans, and we needed to budget, I don't think all was budgeted. Library was under budget by about seven thousand, volunteer fire was under budget by about forty thousand. Civic center was under budget by about eighteen hundred, and then economic development was a little bit over budget, about four thousand. So if we go into the reserves then, so the general fund, so the first column is the goldish color, is an unassigned committed fund balance. So there's about four hundred and sixty-one thousand in unassigned fund balance, and then eight hundred and ninety-five that the council has committed to the future projects, so those total about one point three million, if you divide that by the total annual expenditures in the general fund, it's about two point three million, you come to about fifty-nine percent of your total, fifty-nine percent of the budgeted expenditures from here. So that increased slightly the last two years. Library fund had a restricted portion on the top in the blue, also there's some of the gifts from the trust, and then the unassigned in the bottom, orange color, has increased the last four years, it's increased about thirty-five thousand the last four years. Total fund balance is about a hundred and ninety-six thousand, the library funds mostly funded through property taxes, brings in just another two hundred and eighty-five of the library, and then they also perceive some funds through the community. Civic center fund balance, so civic center spent, or fund balance remained relatively flat, small increase in the fund balance, this is funded through property tax, is about eighty-two thousand, and then they also charge out the rent of the community, or the civic center, just under sixteen thousand total rents this year, expenditures were also up about thirty thousand, we did increase the levy in this, help fund some of those capital projects, they did the floor in the civic center, and then they also had a portion of the reference assessment, so that was an increase in expenditures. Fire first responders fund, so there was a transfer from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, they transferred two hundred and twenty-six thousand out of the fire fund, and moved into a fire capital fund, which is included in the capital projects, that transfer was just under two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so we actually added to our reserves about forty-five thousand, most of that was due to no major capital from the area. Revolving loan fund, so has about a hundred and eighty-six thousand in total, loans outstanding at year end. The city issued three new loans at just under a hundred thousand, and at the end of the year, the fund balance was two hundred and forty-seven thousand, and cash was about two hundred and forty-five thousand, and that's available for loans within that. Economic development, has property tax collections of about sixty thousand, funds are available for market feasibility studies, so we used about eleven thousand of the reserves in the current year, the big change from twenty sixteen to seventeen, they sold a lot, for just under seventy-nine thousand. So that was a main increase in a whole lot of activity that was on this year. I mentioned the projects or sales tax fund, quite all the major lending funds, these funds were accumulated from the city of projects or sales tax to be used for economic development, started with six hundred and thirty-three thousand, and we spent all those funds down. There was a small transfer of about twelve thousand that was put into the economic development fund to close it at year end, so we won't have that going forward. Capital projects funds, so these are actually about twenty-month funds that have different buckets of money. The city has just over two million dollars set aside for future projects. So the cities did, they didn't issue any of their debt to fund their projects this year, so they used it from their reserves, their major capital improvements for the home range subdivision through the completion of the twenty seventeen CIP project, the Schuman Drive expansion, and then the twenty eighteen CIP. The debt service fund, so these are the bonds that are outstanding of the city. You see, we paid off the two thousand seventy, the orange one was paid, sold in twenty eighteen, so that bond has nothing left. The other bonds, the two thousand nine bonds has about thirty-nine thousand, twenty ten has about three hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty eleven has fifty-two thousand. Twenty twelve refunding has two hundred and thirty thousand, twenty thirteen improvement bond is a hundred and thirty-five. Then we have the big twenty sixteen improvement bond at one nine nine hundred and five outstanding, and then two hundred and twenty in the twenty seventeen. All the bonds are being made timely, they're, they do so, all the times are being made timely. So if we go on, we also have two general obligation bonds, that are the twenty twelve A swimming pool, has about nine hundred and eighty thousand, and the twenty thirteen A fire station with about one point four million outstanding. Once again, all these payments are being funded through property taxes from the referendum levy, and they're all payments are being made timely. And then the water and sewer funds, so they both have a share of the twenty sixteen A bonds as well, and all payments are being made timely as well, sewer has just over a million outstanding, and the water has about just under twenty-five thousand. City also has a nursing home sixty billion bond, that was refunded in twenty fifteen, because the low over a million, a million and one hundred and forty thousand outstanding. So this is responsible for the nursing home, city of Stewartville Home, is accounting each array, so these are being paid by those lease payments from the Stewart nursing home, hopefully all these payments are being made timely. So a five-year debt service requirement, so this includes a principal and interest, so the obligations that the city are responsible for as of now with non-rede, it's relatively flat the next three years, at about a little one point seven, or hundred, excuse me, a million, one hundred and seventy thousand the next three years, and then it drops off to a longer million dollars as the bonds are paid out. Next is the net pension liability, so this is always my favorite slide to talk about, this, since the city is a participant in a multi-employer pension plan that is underfunded, every city is required to be, they've recorded their share of the underfunding, and then this is an actuarially determined number, and we take that number and add it into your financial statements, so it decreased in twenty eighteen as the plan changed some actuarial assumptions again, so the total net pension liability is eight hundred and seventy thousand, but as I said, there's not anything you can do, there's not, can't go off and pay this liability off tomorrow which is built there, every city has the under forty thousand, looks at the four thousand basis of tone. And then the net pension assets, so this is the opposite way, this is the fire relief is overfunded by about three hundred and fifty-three thousand. It actually decreased this year as it was the first year in the increase of the benefit payouts, so they, in the prior year, the total liability was just over a little over a million and up to one point three with those higher benefit payouts. Just briefly on the enterprise fund, so starting with the water fund, so we have the revenues in the green color, operating expenditures in the red, non-operating income or expenses in the purple, and then the net income for transfers. So there's a small rate increase in the water fund, you can see our revenues are up about thirty-seven thousand, or four percent. Back in twenty fifteen, there was a one-time charge of a hundred and thirty thousand for the new school property out there. Expenses increased also about ninety-three thousand, most of this was due to fuel tanks, salaries were, salaries, salaries were about twenty-five thousand, and then there was a oil pump repair for about twenty-eight thousand. So in total, operated, before transfer, they added about three hundred and eighteen thousand to the net position in the water fund. So the water fund, if you look at the cash in the green, and then the bonds payable in the red, the city's added cash to the reserves for the last nine, or nine years then, so they're up about one point eight million from twenty ten. The total cash is about two point six million, and then they have bonds outstanding for two hundred and thirty thousand, which are being paid timely. We go on to the sewer fund, then we have the revenues in the green, operating expenses in the orange, and non-operating income or expense and life is moving within the net income for transfers, so the rates again are increasing in the sewer fund, as you can see, the revenues were up about sixty-nine thousand, expenses were also up about seventy-eight thousand, so that was mostly due to the utilities and depreciation that may increase. Both revenues and expenses being up, our net income before transfers were way around four hundred thousand for both twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. If we look at the sewer fund, so twenty seventeen, we used quite a bit of the cash on the project, the fund that we hand out there, so the cash in the estimates increased to two hundred and thirteen thousand, so just over seven hundred thousand in cash in the estimates, and then the bonds outstanding just over a million, which is also being made timely. And then the stormwater fund has a cash balance of about five hundred and eighty-five thousand, so back in twenty twelve, there was a storm fund required, so this fund's got a rate increase in here, additional funds. And then just a quick summary there, the general fund, unassigned and committed fund balance of just over one point three million, is fifty-nine percent of the twenty eighteen expenditures. The general tax levy is fifty-five, or accounts for fifty-five percent of the total governmental revenue compared to the LGA, which is seventeen percent, so here goes reliance on the LGA in the state that's going down every year. The fire department has reserves of just under ninety thousand, but non-debt outstanding, they also, the capital projects funds has three hundred and forty thousand set aside for future equipment trucks. Revolving loan fund has loans outstanding of a hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand of cash for future economic development loans. City capital project fund reserves of just over two million. The total debt outstanding for the city is decreased by six point six million, with non-debt issued and all the bonds being paid timely. Water, sewer, and stormwater are generating sufficient cash flow to fund capital needs, service that the reserves, so I think those rates are good when they're supposed to, but they should be reviewed every year just in case any major repair or anything have to come up. The city's portion of the funding impairment decreased to eight hundred and seventy thousand, the fire relief increased, or decreased again by three hundred and fifty thousand, and then just, thanks for the city for maintaining accurate records for all the city funds and capital, all the supporting documentation there, that was tested during the audit. Any questions?
Any questions for Andrew? Thank you for understanding your court, Andrew. Now, it's not on our agenda before going farther, we have a special guest in our presence tonight, but I'd like to recognize her because, as Andrew said, for the last eleven years, and going on this next one, I'm sure we'll do it again, because the city circle is that with GFOA owner, because of our finance director, Barbara Newlock, and also happy to see her here tonight, and I know she enjoys these numbers more than Andrew. Even some of us might look a little glazed over, but I've lived and breathed these numbers for thirty years. The reason the numbers look as good as they do, and the records are like Andrew says, so accurate, is because of her. And I'd certainly like to award you with another one of these, if you would let me, Barbara. Now it's up to you if you want me to take a picture, now that'd be your choice.
He has to handle cameras. I can take it with me.
Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented once again to the city of Sturton, Minnesota, first wonderful comprehensive interview, and Barbara, it's because of you, that we get this award year after year, this is quite heavy, I can't handle it. We're getting all these buttons on here, and we're sending it in again for this year, as he said, and I am confident with the record-keeping of the double award. Thank you. Alright, so continuing on the agenda, the next item will be, thank you Andrew, try not to fall in one puddle. Tax increment financing, Geotech reports. The city has been approached by Geotech for some hopeful proposed plans to expand the campus here in Sturford. Subject to the proposed approval and establishment of a taxing from the financing district on their parcels, as shown on the attached map. They've been researching, reviewing other regional and interstate sites, would like to continue their investment here in Sturford. But would also need the assistance of Barb, if you want me to go out this way. Don't go down with a stick.
I bet it's a student, so.
I told you you weren't allowed to go down with a stick.
Thanks for coming on, Barb.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you again. They have been researching and reviewing other regional and interstate sites, would like to continue their investment here in Sturford. But would also need the assistance of a TIF plan and district to establish the helping finance proposed expansion project. Which will be a very, very positive additional service tax base as well, as helping keep expanding employees for Sturford. Staff is recommending that we have a TIF plan put together with the assistance of Briggs and Morgan Law Firm, Mary Hipple, and the recommendation to utilize David Drum and Associates, public financing varieties. Mike, move.
Do it a shot.
Move on. That's a deal the city has worked with and utilized for this process before. The cost of which has been estimated to be in the eight to nine thousand dollar range, with the O check agreed to reimburse the city for all these expenses. A proposal for services is attached in the five to fifty-five hundred dollar range, the legal work would be in the twenty-five to three thousand. Staff is further recommending that public hearing process begins well with your approval to the FAS resolutions. Mike will be present at your meeting to help answer any additional questions you may have. Mike, I'm gonna ask you to step up to the podium. Explain this a little bit.
Would you like me to just jump right in, or do you want to do it as a Q and A?
You jump early. And then a Q and A afterwards.
Well, first of all, I've got the good news in bed. The good news is that my presentation should be shorter than Andrew's. The bad news is it's gonna be probably even less riveting. But I am only asking for two actions tonight that commit you to nothing, other than calling for two public hearings. There's a need for two public hearings because, one is required for the establishment of the TIF district, but also because the anticipated assistance to the company, if you can forward with this, will exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's the threshold and statute that requires you to comply with the Business Subsidy Act. Back in the day, cities could have business subsidy contracts where the only public benefit that you got back was an increase in tax base, was the only thing that was necessary. And the state at some point said that's not enough in and of itself, that if the assistance exceeds a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you gotta have a public hearing. And the company's gonna have to agree to create a certain number of jobs within a couple of years after their building is done. And they're also gonna have to agree to maintain their operations for at least five years, to help protect the city from going through this process. Both of those I'm not concerned with, but it's just something that we have to handle in order to comply with law. Real quickly, in terms of taxing for financing, who here has been through the process or has an understanding of it? Okay, maybe for the government of the two new members, I'll just take thirty seconds. All tax increment financing is, is don't be confused, it's just property taxes, it's just how we collect them and how we use them. So when Geotech builds this big expansion, their tax bill is gonna go up. And instead of all of those taxes being collected and distributed normally for things like smog plowing, police protection, and all those things, for a temporary period of time, a good portion of that money instead will come to the city in the form of tax increment. And then the city can use that money to assist the project, okay? There's usually two types of assistance that a city can offer. The first way, which is the risky way, which is the way that you will not be doing this, is what we call upfront assistance. That's one where the city writes a big check upfront, hands it to the developer, and help them pay for project costs. And then we hope, hope to God that the future taxes that are increased are sufficient to come back and pay us back for our big check. And we're not going to be doing that here. The second way, which will be the way, is called pay-as-you-go. That's one where the developer pays for all the costs upfront, and all we're going to do is agree to reimburse them some of those new taxes when they come in. We'll send them back to them at the end of the year every year for a period of time. How long for this particular kind of TIF district, it's nine collections. So if they build the expansion this year, the taxes don't go up this year, they don't even go up next year, they go up in 2021. That'll be year one, and then there'll be eight more years after that for a total of nine. So in effect, the contract is probably closer to an eleven-year contract, but with nine payments built within, if that makes sense. That's about as quickly as I can do this, so from here maybe we should do a Q and A.
Questions, Dave?
I was just like, how many jobs would they be creating?
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, so we actually have Ken here from Geotech, he's here to answer any questions, but they have provided this information to the city. So they're looking at the next two years, the creation of approximately thirty jobs.
As part of the business subsidy contract, this is required by statute, it's a non-negotiable point. Whatever we plug into the contract, it'll say X number of jobs within two years with an average wage of X. If they fail to meet the job goals, and or meet the five-year operational goal, by statute, they would have to repay any assistance that we sent to them, prorated to the extent that they did meet the goals, plus interest. But what we'll try to do is make sure that that contract is fair to the city in terms of job creation, but yet is also at a number that the company feels very confident that they can hit, so that we shouldn't have any trouble.
Do you have questions, Mike? I got a hand on this now? So two actions you need, two separate actions, but can be set all along.
Separate.
So the first one would be to request a public hearing for.
First one would be entering into services with David Drum and Associates.
First action, a motion, you would be delivering a contract with Mike Barnes Company. So, a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, no carries, and we need set public hearing, correct?
Correct. Do you need two of them? Yeah, I just have one, I'm sorry about that, you're just setting the August thirteenth.
Okay, well, the hearings will be on the same night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, don't show them two on here. Public hearing, TIF, public hearing, business subsidy, seven and seven fifteen on August thirteenth. I'll make a motion, I can do both together, right? Be in the same year, right? So I'll make a motion for those two public hearings to be set up, and for you guys to get the wheels rolling on everything you need to notify the public.
Alright, we got a motion, we got a second.
Second.
We got a second on that, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, no carries.
Thank you very much. In terms of publication requests and those sorts of things, handle that on your behalf. As part of this process, one of the things that I'll be doing is putting together a little letter with all the points, and the city will agree to this, this, and this, and maybe you'll agree to that, that, and that. And then Briggs and Morgan, assuming we all agree, will craft that development contract on the basis of that letter of understanding, so.
Perfect.
And I'll see you in the public.
Yep. Stay right.
That's good, thanks.
Thanks for coming down, Mike.
Thank you.
Next item on the general business, conditional use permit. Johnson and McTominay Hall. The planning commission held a public hearing on June fourth. They consider conditional use permit for section thirteen forty-five point zero four, sub G, leaving scars says. Gary Johnson has applied for the CUP to open a car lot at three oh two South Main. The planning commission would recommend the approval of the request subject to the following conditions. Vehicle parking shall not hinder or block access for other uses of the property, no off-site storage of newly used tires, minor repair work. And Gary has asked for repair work, should be minor repair work on vehicles, and nothing major such as engine replacement. Hours of operation will be seven AM to nine PM. Vehicle shall be parked ten foot from right away. At no point should it be wrecked or an operable vehicle stored on the property. There is a mention about the PNC, you're still concerned with parking lot, still gravel from tank removal, but Gary stated he's in the process of getting hopes, is that correct? Thank you. And we'll have it paved, paved. It will be a suggestion that a condition placed, the paving should be completed within ninety days. Any questions, suggestions?
I actually got a question for you, if you'll mind.
Sure.
So is the idea to, look at a map here, you're gonna have cars then kinda line up from the front of the, along the north end of the property, or on the side to the back of the building?
And the reason I did this, decided to do it myself, Greg, is that the two guys that are gonna do it, they wanted to approach further, you know, closer to the south, and I didn't want that. And so if I have two tenants coming in for space, I would, I noticed that, I didn't see that until later on as far as the suggestion. I would ask that that not be a stipulation for the, I don't want to be put into a, you know, a ninety-day frame, that sort of thing, so. And I don't think that was the original condition with my, the original two guys who were my lease in space.
Are you not feeling confident in ninety days, or are you not feeling confident in paving it?
I just don't.
Because I really think paving is huge.
I just don't, I just don't like that, that there's a stipulation being put on after I have already put a hundred and forty thousand dollars into the property as far as the taxes and taking the tanks and such out. I meant those obligations, and I felt that the city should, should.
Paving that lot would be so huge for that property, and for your project.
Exactly, and I have, I have three of the five bids entered now, but I'm just saying that I think that in good faith, the city should not put that in as a stipulation above and beyond what we did before.
We did get a call from one of the renters, and he was speaking on behalf of all three of them, and they are concerned about that.
Well, I would, I would expect that to be, and I'll be the first to say you've done a ton to clean it up, I mean, I appreciate that greatly. But I'd really, I'd be so bummed out if it didn't get followed through or no, you know, I mean, that really would make a difference.
I have followed through on everything that I've done, I just asked that you trust me as I trusted the city. And now all of a sudden, staff has decided, you know, I can get a realize where we're coming from also then. I have property in an alleyway that was given to, to another party that had been ingress, egress, major ingress, egress, on my property since nineteen seventy-eight, but no public hearing, no council approval, it was done by staff and mayor. So that's where I'm coming from. That needed to be put out publicly.
But that, it's got nothing to do whether we require a paved up parking lot or not.
Well, it does, because it's my word.
Slight fault on this, maybe.
My word versus everything, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Well, no, and I understand you being upset, I just don't.
I don't need to do the business, I want to do the business.
Sure, well, I just don't want to be.
I don't have to do it.
I just don't want to aim us to get into a situation where it's like, well, we're upset with something that happened over here, therefore we're gonna do that. I mean, I wouldn't expect us to do that, anything to you of spite or regard.
Well, exactly, and I say the same thing, but you know, I don't know why people would, would store tires outside. But then, nothing against Miracle Auto Center, but if you go by there, they've got tires that are sitting out there, so, and, and if you go to House Derby Lake, their cars are parked on the boulevard in the back, I mean, it's, it's, it's those things, it seems like it's one, one rule for, for me, and it's another rule for everybody else.
They have paved lots, okay.
What?
They have paved lots.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
That was a joke.
Yes, but it's ordinance, what I'm saying is that ordinance is meant, you know, it's, it's for to be followed, whether it's a liquor ordinance or anything else.
Can you discuss this a little?
Very briefly, I think we were just starting to impression that he was just, just like Gary said with the bids. We just discussed more, he was just gonna give the, a list of minor repair work that he was planning on doing. And otherwise, it was pretty much, he's working with the guy from the colony.
Not Robert, yeah, Ross. And we did that, we had the building permits, everything, he, you know, he got to the property.
Yeah, it's basically a carryover from Big Bubba's, right?
It was, it was, and that's why I decided, when I decided to give you the stipulations on what I would take into the conditional use permit, and I followed those, and then all of a sudden, staff is suggesting that this be done also, and it's gonna be another fifty thousand dollars. And, but I just, I'm just saying that I don't feel that that should be a stipulation. Because I could not do the business and not do the parking lot, she would have been.
Well, I know, I totally do, but I'm just looking at you doing the business, you with your tenants, the overall value of your property, I mean, the paving to me is a no-brainer. I do understand fifty grand is, it's not just sitting around on the floor, right?
And I haven't said that I'm not going to do that. It's just that I don't wanna be in front of a timeframe, that's what I'm saying.
I really hope you get that done, that would be great. I'm babbling off, if you guys want to add anything.
It'll get done, Greg, it's just that I don't, I don't feel that I should have a timeframe.
Seems like ninety days is clear to get down from here.
But if you go back to the original condition, the use permit conditions, that was not a stipulation, so now it's added, that's what I'm saying. You, you have to, you took me at my word, and I would do what I did, and I did it, and I did it in kind of a fashion. I'm just asking you to continue to believe what I do, and that you would not put in a stipulation. Tell it I have it on record.
You know what, someone makes it questionable why ninety days puts you at the end of the paving season almost for this year. If I believed you're gonna do it, I'd believe you're gonna do it before ninety days anyhow. Correct?
Could be, or it could be next year.
Where do you want to pave it over for Big Bubba's, A and M, or are you gonna need to gravel it?
Well, the, the area that we have, there's, there's only actually literally two areas that were over the tanks, and then in between where the pumps were, where they took out the, where they took out the islands. So otherwise, that's, that's the only space that is, is gravel. But I plan on going from the parking lot at the office building to form a driveway. So, that's about eighty, eighty by hundred eighty-two piece of.
I guess we're only asking you to do the parking, so.
Well, but if I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it right, right set, I mean, that's.
Anybody else getting ahead?
No, I've already been pretty open on it, I'm all for going forward and then giving him the opportunity, I mean, he totally deserves that, in my opinion. The pavement, I could go with whatever did you guys say, I mean, I'm not, I don't know that I'm ready to make a motion one way or the other, I, I understand where he's coming from, and I respect that. Obviously, it's a little higher risk, I guess, because I'd really like to see it get paved, and without it necessarily being in there, possibility certainly exists that you just don't do it, you know, and that would, that would be a bummer, but I could go, I, I wanna see this go forward, but I'll let you guys discuss a little bit what, where you're at.
How long would the conditional permit go?
Pretty much a state of property, right? Pretty much a state of property.
Yeah, until he ceases this business.
Any thoughts to go on?
If we don't put a time limit on it, on having it paved, I mean, obviously, it's his property. But he could go two years without paying it.
He could wait till, or he could wait till.
That's where it throws up a red flag for me, you know, you know, no fast, I mean.
No, 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 I, I, I'll just say this, I don't have to do the business, and I wouldn't have to do the work. I'm not going through, through the stages right now, but what I'm just saying is that I'm, I'm asking the, the city to stick with their stipulations for the condition.
What we originally agreed on.
Correct, there was nothing as large as a certification.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, because it was a little different, because we're approving their business, but obviously, they didn't really have control of the property. But I do think that we agreed at the time that you were gonna work with the county, like you said you are now. And they had some things that they needed to get up to speed, but you, you've taken care of all that.
Well, that's all, yeah, we, with, with the dealer's license, you have that access to a bathroom. So what we did is, we wasn't looking to stop it anyway, because of the liquor store, and then with the flower shop, so we put a hallway.
Okay.
So it was all, all the leak permits, electric bill, and so, and Ron, Ron expected, and he expected the.
Garage.
The flower wood strap. The, uh, flower wood structure, everything, which is almost kind of different now.
Gary, would you be okay if we changed that from ninety days to one year?
You know, I, I guess, I would, I would like the city, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, I would just like the city to, to abide by the conditions were original. I abide by everything and continue to, and put the money, invested the money into it. And I feel that the city should hold up the during the part.
Somebody make a motion.
Well, screw you guys, I mean, I'll make a motion and move forward, and I'll, I'm actually, I'll grant his, uh, his wishes on it. I'm not gonna add the, the payment on this. My motion would just be to approve the conditional use permit as suggested, and which was approved by your guys' group, right?
P and Z.
P and Z, so that would be my motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? There are none, on the favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Matt Carey's.
I won't disappoint you.
Get paving, Gary.
I appreciate that.
Next one under general business is Plan Commission, held a public hearing. Oh, this is for, uh, Tampa Garage, five eleven North Main. Plan Commission, held a public hearing on June fourth, consider the conditional use permit for section thirteen forty-five point zero five sub B. Eleven, use limitations. One camp of five eleven, Main, North Main Streets, Plan to place current lean to with a twelve by one four garage. Plan Commission's recommending approval of requests. Council action requests to approve the conditional use permit for garage is requested. Any questions or discussion on that?
I don't think there's any issues at P and Z.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion approved.
Second?
Second.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matt Carey's. Next one under general business, variance for fence. Whitton, three hundred twelfth Avenue Northeast. Plan Commission, held a public hearing on June fourth, consider fifteen foot variance, request to place a fence on the side yard property line for section thirteen seventy-five point twenty-seven, sub B one. The Plan Commission is recommending approval of request, knowing that this property was unusual as Third Street Northeast dead ends at the city limits. In this corner lot situation, there would be no sight infringement or safety issues. The property owners agree that development would occur to the east, the fence will be removed or placed at the set back line. Council action requested to approve the conditional use permit for garage is requested. Questions or discussion?
Okay, so I'm just a little bit confused, so they just wanna put it as far back at the property is what they're saying right now? And if, if it does get developed out there, they'll move it back?
To the, follow order, yes.
Which yours is fifteen foot.
Yep.
I don't, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matt Carey's. That takes us to twenty nineteen CIP one-way traffic. From recent, twenty nineteen CIP project north neighborhood open house that was suggested by several residences and tenants who live along that short section of Fifth Street Southeast. If the city would consider making that section a one-way traffic direction from west to east in lieu of having to give up parking on one side of that street, as had been proposed in the project. This is due to very, to current very limited parking visibility and for the new addition of sidewalk for residents on the north side of the street. Staff feels this could be a workable solution to try out, as it should not affect a very large amount of traffic other than the immediate adjacent neighbors that would utilize it, and them, they have expressed a desire for it. Some minimal additional signage would be the only additional cost, and if it were to ever be changed, the one-way signage could be utilized or preserved for other parts of the city. Council action would be... Proven on, maybe one of those street up there. Discussion?
Well, sure, when I first read it, I thought it sounded like a, not a very feasible project, it seemed odd to me. But looking at it again, and knowing that these guys, if they're losing all that parking, uh, it sounds like that's pretty important to them, so I'm certainly willing to give it a shot. We wouldn't have to do any lining or striping or anything with that?
We'd have to enter one-way sign and do no enter on the other end.
Pretty simple.
So minimal signage, uh, you, you wouldn't be using the no parking signs that were scheduled to go in that, so might even be almost less signage, I'm not sure what was projected there, but...
But most of the, most of that neighborhood has had this open house, and they're all kind of on board now.
Big turnout for the open house.
Actually, that was one of the topics that they were, the most negative I heard of the whole thing was losing that parking there.
Really surprised Johnny didn't come up with a solution, I'm a little disappointed.
I figured they wanted to be able to go both ways out of their driveways. Most cities don't put one ways in anymore.
Yeah, it's still a little strange, but if it, if it's a unique solution that will please the people that are put out on the deal, it's, I'm all for it. In fact, I'll, I'll make a motion that we try it.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, go second.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Nice thing was, we can reverse it if we decide it doesn't work.
I wanna make the sidewalks ten feet wide.
It's not built yet, Craig.
Front page news, there, I just screwed myself. Go Vikings.
We got a motion, the second, on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matt Carey's. That takes us to, next item is resolution receiving feasibility study and calling for a public hearing for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CIP state utility improvement. SEH has completed the feasibility study for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CIP, which will be presented tonight. The next step is to set a public hearing, make a discussed, goals, project, and assessments. Public comments have been heard at that meeting. Staff has sent out notices to property owners within the proposed project area, published twice in the local paper, and the public hearing can be scheduled on July ninth. Most of the public hearing has been held, the council can determine at that time, it's actually proceeding with the twenty twenty CIP, which would be the fourth best book. You have anything you need to tell us or present to us?
Well, we talked about it a bit earlier, um, I guess, the project, as we took our tour earlier, consists of First Street West, um, west of North Main Street, um, to Third Avenue. Second Street Northwest from Main Street all the way to Sixth Avenue Northwest. Second Avenue Northwest in between Second Street and Third Street. Third Street Northwest between North Main Street and Third Avenue. Third Avenue Northwest from First Street West up to Lake Shore Drive. Lake Shore Drive from North Main Street to Second Street, and Second Street North, well, I already did Second Street, but also Fourth Street Southwest, um, the alley, the, just north of the high school. And as we were looking into it, um, some pieces that were added to it also includes Sixth Avenue Northwest, dead end by the cemetery, and looking at the sanitary sewer that connects, um, Third Street, Second Street Southwest to Second Street Northwest. Um, it's a ten-inch trunk main that has not been repaired, that goes through, um, some of the houses, and is likely under some of the houses or garages, which would need to be trenchless, um, type of a repair. But there are cracks in that line, um, nothing's completely coming in yet, but now would be a good time to repair that.
So you do not need to dig up their backyards?
We do not need to dig, dig up the houses, we can do that trenchlessly, um, with a lining project. For all of the streets mentioned, excluding, uh, the one by the high school, everything would be a complete reconstruct. All sanitary sewer, we do not have record of when it was installed. It's sometime likely well before nineteen fifty. Most, majority of the water main is also at that same timeframe. We have many mains that are four inches, which is, uh, not legal for fire protection. A lot of the hydrants are not sized legally for fire protection, and we don't have enough hydrants out there.
And a break history.
And there's also a break history in the area. I think I mentioned every year, the hot soils we see around here, um, that, um, basically corrode at our water mains, whether they were cast iron or ductile iron, um, it wrote, you know, taking away that metal, and all of a sudden, we just have a, a break. So it's nothing to do with soil shifting or frost or anything like that, it is just what's in that soil eating at that metal. Um, which is why we have gone to PVC. So we would be replacing all of that, and also, um, fixing up the storm sewer. So, um, we did not finalize a layout or anything per se. We do have an idea, um, and costs that we put together, but we would propose to come together, um, after a survey and some preliminary work, and do a workshop with the council again this year, um, looking at possibilities and potentials, um, with all the varying sizes of right-of-way. We have a big variety out there, from restraints of forty-five feet wide, all the way up to a hundred and three feet wide. Um, your, your average or your standard neighborhood street is sixty-six feet. So that's what we're used to dealing with, is sixty-six feet of right-of-way. But there is a lot out here that's fifty or forty-five. So trying to make a balance, um, we'll have to weigh different options. With all of that, the majority of the area does have sidewalk on both sides. So we've put in the cost to include sidewalk and fix all the connections that are out there. We are looking at this to be a two-year project, um, two years' worth of construction. Due to the closeness of all the streets and figuring out the phasing and working everything together, I'm actually recommending designing it all at the same time, um, and bidding it at once. And then the contractor would work for two years. We don't have to do it that way, but just the complexity of all those intertwining streets, um, it might make for the cleanest project that we can have. The total estimated cost, um, including contingencies, engineering, legal, um, all your administrative fees, is five million, a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
You said this is a four-year project?
It's two.
That's excluding the alley, correct?
What was that?
That's excluding the alley.
That included the alley.
It does include it.
So we could take that out and relook at it. That, the accessible portion of that is six hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Does it seem similar to that project?
Yes.
Does it seem like higher than others, cause a lot of our last projects weren't complete?
It does seem higher than others, cause a lot of them weren't complete, like, last year's, we didn't do sanitary sewer, so you have that in there. You have some wider streets out there, um, you're paving a lot of it.
But we might, we might...
There's some things narrowing down, um, when you include some of that parking, though, that's still a lot more pavement. You have some larger storm sewer, um, you're, you know, you're close to the river, so your outlet comes there, so we're dealing with larger structures and larger pipe. Um, we're also dealing with construction cost increases, um, which I've taken into account, what we have been seeing. You know, some of our concrete structures, bits that we got this year, almost doubled off of what we were estimating three years ago. We've also seen twenty percent increases from three years ago on a lot of different items. So, taking all that into account, um, with, you know, just the project we're gonna start this year, the feasibility report for all of the cost estimated two million one hundred thousand, so if you... Were a few hundred thousand more than last year per year, once you average it out, but there would be an upfront cost to get all of it designed, but then the next, the next year you would save. So, um, if you want me to break it down further, or try to reorganize things, we can do that too, but that whole area is around that five million dollar mark.
So the council action requests to adopt resolution two thousand nineteen dash, a resolution receiving, receiving feasibility study and calling for a public hearing on twenty twenty twenty-one street utility projects. Motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions?
Well, if you do it, if you bid it all out, wouldn't, that would lock in the price, so if you need, you could go up, you would already have that.
They could leave their equipment all winter, so we only have to pay for mobility costs. You'd likely see a savings doing, one group getting it all year.
Yeah, they're, they're locking in that, that work for two years, where they aren't questioning what they're gonna be doing. Where you might not see a savings, and depending on oil prices, oil barrel prices, is bituminous. They're gonna project that it's gonna go up, and if all of a sudden the barrel falls, then you're stuck at that higher price. But, uh, nothing else has ever really fluctuated back down, um, so that's your one item.
Can we just switch the gravel?
I would say that too, why can't we just, just mill it overlay, and let us pay for, for your rentals?
If this guy was still here, he would've done lots.
Do you have a motion, the second? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Matt Carey's.
I'm skipping that workshop.
All right. West Development. Next item, GDP process for West Development. At the West Development meeting held on June fourth, council requested that RCE be placed on the agenda to start the general development plan process for an updated GDP to coincide with the sewer service plan for the West Development area. Okay, the council action requested is to approve SEH, prepare an updated general development plan for the West Development area. Questions or discussion?
Craig was there.
Craig was there.
You got any questions or, yeah, we're up to there? That's a not to exceed price, correct? Do we have a motion on that, to start the GDP process with SEH?
I'll make that motion. One second.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matt Carey's.
I have a quick question, man.
All right.
That's the same question. You know, we're at the school, everyone's, school's here, right, so we can't, should this place? Do they own it all, do they have, do they, or then we drill through tonight, they all have that too?
No, this is what the GDP will cover.
Yeah, that's okay, so this is what you're doing, the whole thing.
Yeah, they're doing the whole GDP.
Fair, okay.
Make sure it's super, you know, super...
We just wanna lay out the utilities to handle everybody correctly.
Now, isn't that the area of building, you were thinking potentially another, we need another tower, or? Now, isn't that the area of building, you were thinking potentially another, we need another tower? Water tower on that? I just saw you mention it the other day.
Potentially have a bearing on that, but if that totally filled out with residential growth and then we had business, um, growth into the remaining.
I think the tower is close enough to provide pressure. The question, what would be the well? Oh, so it'd be a well to be able to replenish the tower faster.
All right, you have a motion on that?
Yeah.
One second. Call and favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. It'd be busy again. Mayor, that gets us on the general business cases, Mayor Staff and Council reports. Mayor's report tonight, City's Sturfield White, the center of sympathy to the families of Marjorie Wolfman, Larry DeRide, Dale Turner, Ralph Queasly, Luther Ronal, Seth Struich, Virginia Shurberry, Wendy Lutton. I'm gonna butcher that one. What is that, B crap? Marjorie Anken, Julian Johnson, Jerome Wickett, and Marcia Waschonah. The Sturfield Community Band announces a summer concert. First up is next Tuesday, June eighteenth, six thirty at Saint John's Lutheran Church. Lions will lead the blood drive on June eighteenth from seven to ten thirty AM. Please call the church office to schedule a donation. Rowan Hills Trances conducting a community survey so they can provide the best possible service to meet the needs of your transportation. The survey is on the city's website, can also be filled out in person at City Hall, at the library, or at the Center for Acton Adults. And don't forget, Storm is coming to town July fifteenth through nineteenth. A group of young people will be here to help with painting, yard work, minor construction, house cleaning, almost anything you might need. Sign up, they're calling Renee Wilson, two six one, five four one three. And this is sponsored again by the Sturfield United Methodist Church. That's all I've got on here. City Administrator Report?
Uh, report's in your packet. Just one positive comment to add, today at the ROCOG meeting, uh, council member on the Rochester City Council, Sean Palmer, sits on that board with me. He did a whole bunch of training of the lifeguards this year at our pool and he does that on the side or as part of one of his jobs or whatever. Anyway, he said, be sure to pass on to the council what a great pool we've got and what great people to work with, uh, down there. So I said, I would do that for you. So he said, the comments he even hears in his circles are how great the, uh, Stewartville Pool is. And then as a follow-up on that, the Post Bulletin, um, contacted me saying, we've been nominated to be in that, you know, that regional vote kinda contest or program they put out each year of restaurants and this or that, recreational activities. Well, we've been nominated to be one of the best pools in the region. So, um, I'll try to get more information here, but it's a chance for the public to vote our pool in, so.
I forgot to mention it until your report, SEH. Also, people, uh, the Citizens Volunteer Dog Park is announced a grand opening event at the new dog park and that'll be this Saturday, June fifteenth. Eleven AM to one PM, we're gonna put in at eleven thirty AM and it's looking really sharp. We drove out there today, tonight, it looks really good. Public Works has done well with the volunteers and it's nicely developed. Don't forget that either. Anything else, Bill?
Nope, that should do it, thank you.
Finance Director's report, Bill.
Uh, it was all lotted news this past week and, uh, obviously, uh, we'll be working together with Jenna and Paul Donna on figuring out financing, obviously for the current project, uh, and trying to get that, uh, laid out in a scenario that'll work out great. And, uh, I think we're gonna be utilizing those same resources as you just heard a little bit ago with Jen and Paul on how to look at, um, financing for a big, huge project that's down the road.
All right. Uh, any questions on finance? All right, thanks, Bill. Public Work Director, Sean.
Uh, you guys had enough tonight, so nothing new. Just what's in their report.
Everything's looking good for what is this, though. Very sensitive, keep their head up. City Engineer, Jen, do you have anything else?
Um, just for this year's project, um, if you guys are aware, the reclaiming will start next week. And when we start that reclaiming, that is when we will start counting the construction days. So, um, the work that is being done by the utility company does not count towards our contractor.
Anything else, Jen? Any questions for Jenna? All right. No library director tonight, but we got a fire chief report.
All right, so I sent, uh, you had the April and the May reports, uh, in your packet. Uh, just a couple of things go through. Uh, April was a very busy month for us. We ended up having, uh, fifty-two calls, uh, that month with, uh, yeah, fifty-two calls with five hundred and eighty hours of staff time committed just to emergency response. Uh, training for April was, uh, fire detection systems, uh, so going through fire alarms, sprinkler systems. Uh, we also did a pre-plan down at the Milestone, uh, plant out on County Six. And then we went through our air monitors, uh, just to get everybody up to speed on the air monitors again. Uh, May was a little bit more reasonable for us. Uh, we had a total call for service of thirty-six, uh, with two hundred and ninety-eight hours of service, uh, to the community. Uh, that month or last month what we did was we were at the Southeast Regional Training Center. Uh, we did vertical ventilation, ladder, search and rescue, ropes and knots. Uh, we were out there twice, uh, with Squad One and, uh, once with Squad Two out there. Uh, along with that, I had a business meeting last night. Uh, probably the biggest issue we've got going on right now, uh, is the department did find a used ladder truck, uh, they're going to go look at. Four members on the Apparatus Committee, uh, you received an email on this, will be driving down to Starksville, uh, Mississippi on Friday, June eighth. So they'll drive down on Friday, they'll stay the night down there. They'll inspect the truck on Saturday morning. Uh, drive halfway back Saturday and then be back sometime on Sunday. So the truck, uh, basically is everything that we were looking for when we were talking to you about buying that new ladder truck for one point two million dollars. This is the exact same truck, it's got the same specifications, it's just a two thousand and twelve truck, uh, for two hundred and fifty thousand. So it's the most economical truck that we've been able to find in a used status that looks like it's gonna meet our needs. Everything we look at right now, it looks like it'd be a great truck. Almost a, I don't wanna say a steal, but it's gonna be a, a good value for what we're looking for. Uh, we'll have a better idea what happens when we get down there on June twenty-ninth. Well, not me, but the guys get down on June twenty-ninth to actually go through and inspect it and look at it, uh, see what's wrong with it. So one thing, uh, the department's asking for is if we do get down there and decide we want, uh, want to pursue this truck, is the city council okay with us trying to put a down payment on it? We would still need to come back to city council for final approval to purchase the truck. Look, we could get into some type of agreement to hold the truck until we have time to get city council approval on moving forward with it. For a funding mechanism, we have three hundred and ninety, three hundred and some odd thousand in our truck replacement fund. That is not counting a hundred thousand that is in the operating budget this year to go in there. So theoretically, we have about four hundred, almost five hundred thousand dollars in the truck replacement fund. Our proposal would be that, uh, if we would receive approval from the council to buy it, we'd just pay cash for it as we have with our apparatus historically. So there would be, you know, a service bond or anything like that on it.
Are you taking any, uh, I know you're picking the wrong guys, are you taking any type of inspector, anybody with your, or?
No, so it's gonna be Steve Denny, uh, Brandon Dolman, Jeff Olson, and Ryan Podey, uh, who's going there. So Steve is still DOT certified, uh, for a heavy truck. Uh, the main thing that they'll be looking for is to verify that the truck has been certified. Uh, the pump is certified, much as like we do with our trucks here, and the aerial system is certified. Uh, if they have the certification records, which I believe they do have, uh, really I'd be looking at it, maintenance issues to see, you know, is there any corrosion anywhere that they shouldn't have corrosion? Uh, how does the truck operate? Uh, the guys plan on running the truck, pumping the truck, going through the whole shebang with it to, to make sure. Uh, if for some reason they get down there and certifications aren't what it's supposed to be, it'll probably be a no-go issue unless they can kind of figure out what's going on with it.
I like that cost a lot more than the other costs that we've been dealing with.
Uh, right now, we did, uh, we did, re, uh, do some more work. We tried to get the ladder truck recertified this year. We got some of the things fixed, but it still can't be certified, so.
Well, I understand, I like hearing two hundred and fifty thousand, maybe more than a million. I mean, it's way.
Yeah, so, no, it's, uh, it'll be, if the truck is everything it's being portrayed to be, uh, the guys have done a lot of work, phone calls with the fire chief and stuff down there. Uh, if it's what it's being portrayed to be, it'll be a good value for what we're getting, so.
Bill?
Benson, I talked too, that this down payment would hopefully be set up in a situation that if we lose it, it's refundable. If it's accepted and you approve a full purchase, it obviously goes toward the purchase. And then Paul Donna offered, um, even though that recommendation might work out well because of what we got in the funds, Paul Donna offered, he would, uh, bring you like three different financing scenarios if you should decide to approve it. Just so you have a couple of options to weigh out, so.
I don't have a problem.
I appreciate you guys working so hard and trying, I mean, it was clear that your options were limited. It was, you guys have been banging your head against the wall, so it's nice that you kept hanging.
Yeah, no, and it's, I mean, we appreciate the time you guys gave us in the direction, it helped a lot. Uh, you know, of course, everybody would love a brand-new shiny fire truck, but the reality is it does have a large impact on the community long-term. So I think if this is what it's being projected to be, it'll be a good value. So we won't know till you get back.
Need a motion then, Vance?
Yes, please, Bill.
Yep.
Somebody needs a motion?
It could just be a vague motion saying that we'd be willing to go into an agreement with the down payment, basically?
Yes.
And without any money said or anything like that?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to go forward with that.
One second.
Motion to second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing done, call and favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
And clarification, that would be, Bill would be the one communicating with that. City administration, city administration, right, Bill?
Yep.
Perfect. So our guys won't do it, let us know that, get all the bill to, to work on that.
All right, thank you, Vance. Is that all your report for that, Vance?
That's it.
All right, thank you. You guys have been keeping busy, getting busy again today.
Always crazy. Not good.
No. Committee Commission Board reports, Chamber of Commerce, Martin United, E H R A.
I'm just last meeting, so.
Now we got a meeting, we had a meeting, the minutes are in there. President Queasly's here, if he wants to have anything added. Seat updates are in the packet, before you take a look at it. Oh, I thought that big headline was gonna say, we got that forty-six thousand. Finance?
Um, we met last week, right?
Yep, yep.
Over the financials for the last year. Anything else coming up, Bill?
Yeah, just you as a committee, um, start gathering other ideas, projects, items you might want included in next year's budget. Uh, the department heads will be doing the same. And then both Paul and Andrew said, obviously this year, uh, they'll be helping us put that, uh, I'll just call it proposed budget, uh, together since we're in a transition stage here. And, um, but we'll have to start shifting gears now to work on that to come up with a preliminary by September, so.
All right, but no meeting scheduled for these guys at this time.
Not ready.
Thank you. Library?
Nothing, no.
Park Board?
Met last night, talked about long-range plan, getting ready for budget proposal coming up in a couple of months.
Personnel? I don't think there's anything new.
No, we'll eventually start calling through applications here, so.
Planners on you?
We met last week and meeting in the future.
July meeting.
July meeting. Minutes are in your packet from last week.
All right. Public Safety, Mike, do you get anything?
The, uh, mayor report is in your packet, five hundred full calls for service. A little bit higher, um, a lot of traffic stops, still working that sixty-three project. Um, get people to slow down. Um, also with the detour from Chapel Hill for twenty-seven, um, we're starting to see an increase in traffic into the South Town. Um, so those of you that are traveling east, uh, for recreation or business, uh, please be patient, slow down, make sure your headlights are on, especially in inclement weather. Um, and also with the game agricultural season, um, like, uh, we deal with the nine, fire department, the nine, state control. Please be patient with those vehicles, you don't know when they're turning. Um, so also, uh, August sixth is National Night Out. You can register your bigger parties at Cock Talk Live. Um, otherwise, uh, also for our office, we are hiring interneals, so. If you know anybody interested in seeking, uh, new adventure.
Any questions or anything else for Mike? All right, thank you, Mike. Thanks for your overview. Public Works?
I have no report.
Ready?
Uh, minutes in your packet, no, nothing additional report at this time.
ROCOG?
Uh, minutes in your packet, and I just highlighted the park and ride. Uh, they're not getting it into the plan, um, so obviously will be included in that. We're also considered on the short range. Today I gave them a report that, um, we're already starting to work with MINDOT. Uh, Rochester City Lines was sitting right next to me, so we're gonna work with them too, um, to see if this can all become reality. And then as I commented on the street tour, uh, ROCOG had done some public comment period for their comp plan, one of the big areas was pedestrian, uh, traffic, if you will. And believe it or not, the number one comment that came out of it was connecting lengths. And as I said on the bus, you know, a lot of those folks were from Rochester, but as they collected them throughout the county, connecting lengths was an important item that came in. And Jenna's been good to spec out as we've done sidewalks. Two of the other comments that came in, they do want the pet ramps that we're starting to incorporate on each corner, and then they do like the wider sidewalks. So even though that's not gonna be totally possible in all spots, when Craig brought it up too, it was interesting that wider sidewalks was one of the big comments that came out of it. So I think we're on a good roll if we keep that philosophy of our sidewalks being a part of those CIP projects. That should do it.
All right, thank you. Still one eighty?
Happy Father's Day.
Uh, thank you. Transit Advisory Committee.
All right. Real quick. Um, we're six weeks into our survey of Stewartville residents and their needs for public transportation. We're right at the end, we have one week, so if you filled one out, make sure and drop it off here so we can, we can get the information from you. And if you haven't filled them out, please grab one, pick one up here and, uh, fill one out so we can evaluate the transportation needs for, for our town.
All right. Thanks for sticking around this long, you're the report. Appreciate you. Communications tonight, we got a J two D newsletter in there, proves that, journey to growth. That takes us to open mic, the open mic policy. The city council welcomes and encourages participation with community members. Please keep in mind that the council must be part of the city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules. So no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We would also request that the council delay the four minutes. Speakers be recognized only one time. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Use the opportunity. Unconscionate. We're going to our final motion of the year. We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second, call and favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, return.